Good evening. Welcome to the Wednesday, January 17th meeting from the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees. Item 1.0, call to order. Karen, can you call the roll?
Trustee Bradrick?
Present.
Trustee Ellis?
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Present.
Trustee Harris?
Present.
Trustee Lee? Trustee Mahalik?
Here.
Trustee Morales?
Here.
Trustee Bazinski?
Present.
Okay, we have a call.
Item 1.02, welcome everyone to the meeting. A little bit of a cold came with us this time. I blame it on our new president, but... Item 1.03, the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'm going to ask our student trustee to start the pledge for us.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and just as well.
Item 1.1, Communications, Kelly Roder Tenelli.
Good evening, everyone. Thrilled to be with you here today in this first opportunity to celebrate yet another wonderful and really unique partner of Joliet Junior College, the Polished Pebbles Girls Mentoring Program. And before I kick off, I really want to give a lot of the credit for growing this program and our relationship with it and organization to Mr. Joe Lyman. So Joe, if you could stand up for a minute and be recognized.[123.89][123.89](applause). Joe has a great history here at JJC in and of himself. He retired from industry, started out as an adjunct faculty member, worked into full-time faculty status, and is now the Chair of our technology or technical department. So, thank you, Joe. So, Polished Pebbles is something that Joe brought to the college about three years ago, and it's an organization that provides mentoring opportunity for young girls ages seven to 17. And what they do is really expose those girls, and particularly to career and technical education pathways, new career opportunities and professional skill building. And so for the last three years, JJC has been ground for them to do that. They actually have an event coming up here in March that will bring over double the number of young girls that we brought last year. I'm thrilled to share that last year Representative Dee Avalar came and attended this event, spoke at the panel, so it really is not only well-attended but well-respected by our other community partners. So, I am thrilled tonight to introduce Nea Lackland, who's joining us virtually today. Nea is the, one of the program managers at Polished Pebbles and has really kind of a unique story in and of herself. She started in the Polished Pebbles program, so really special connection. So, Nea, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Well, yes, thank you so much for that introduction. I am super excited to really be here and connect with you and talk about a story that really deals a lot with impact. A lot of the work that we do at Polished Pebbles is impact and passion-driven, and I am so thankful that this partnership has been able to help fuel that even more. At Polished Pebbles, we do have a saying that is the three Cs, and the first C is communication. So, we do build effective communication skills among all of our participants and mentees. And then the second one is community, where we do work with a lot of community leaders, business partners, to be able to support the girls. So that the next C is career, that the girls enter the workforce feeling supported, feeling ready, and just able to start with a great fresh start. And so that's where JJC really comes in at. They help us cultivate the communication skills throughout our job shadows and various community events, and then they really help us support the girls when they are making decisions about their lives and what they want to see for themselves in the future. And I'm excited to really say that we do have an initiative that is called the Pink Card Hats Project, where we help girls get into the trades, and JJC is one of our number-one partners within that initiative. We have been able to have one girl go into the trades, and we have so many more that are really interested in getting into it as well. So like what was mentioned, we've been able to double the numbers because it has been such an impactful project. We have done two previous job shadows together, both in 2022 and 2023. The girls were able to be exposed to so many things, such as the PLC robot, the robot dog, testimonials from former students, as well as instructors, and it has been an amazing journey. And we are super excited to continue this connection and continue the partnership. So, I really hope that I get the chance to meet all of you all when we do come out for the job shadow on March 8th. We've been able to really have a waitlist of girls, of almost 50 girls, interested in this opportunity, so it's going to be such a stellar experience for them, and they are excited to really learn about everything you all have to offer. And there are so many other ways that we really would love to connect with you all, such as our Pink Card Hats Symposium that will also be during Women in Construction Week. And thank you so much for having me. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer anything.
Any questions? I don't believe we have any questions at this time. Thank you. Finished? Thank you. Item 1.2, Proclamations, 1.2.1, African American History Month. Dr. Elan DeFarmer.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. So, good evening Chairman Bazinski, trustee of the board and the JJC community. Please join me in welcoming Isaiah Ramsey to the podium. Isaiah, please come up. Isaiah is a second-year student majoring in business marketing. He is currently serving as the President of the Black Student Union. Isaiah is known for his positive energy in collecting really unique jackets. Do you have a unique jacket today?
I actually do, it's right here.[443.03][443.03](laughter). It's my marching band jacket from West.
Absolutely. Wonderful. Well, Isaiah, the floor is yours.
Okay, first off, how's everybody doing on this lovely night? It's cold, cold lovely night. Still lovely. All good?
Yes.
Okay. All right. The contributions of the citizens of the African-American ancestry to the history and culture of the United States are invaluable and abundant, and these contributions deserve recognition. And citizens of the African-American ancestry comprise a significant percentage of the residents of the Illinois Community College District Number 525. And it is the goal of Joliet Junior College to provide its students with a comprehensive curricular and co-curricular educational experience with consideration given to the contributions of all socially identifiable groups within the African history, American, I apologize, within American history and culture. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, states of Illinois hereby proclaims that January 31st, 2024, through February 29th, 2024, as African-American History Month in Illinois Community College District Number 2525.
I want to take a minute, interrupt the proclamations here. At the last board meeting at the conclusion, I read a statement regarding a policy we are working on. A lot of effort's gone into this policy, but I promise you, we were going to keep working on the policy till it was right. We have Karen Kissel, Nancy Garcia-Guian, and Michelle that have spent, you know, many, many conversations trying to make this right so that it's all-inclusive and what's right for the college. That being said, because we weren't ready because of the snow, because of the campus closure, because of scheduling, we were not able to have another policy meeting since then. Therefore, at this time, we do not want to hold the request of the students hostage until we're ready, since they did request it early enough. So what we're looking for here from the board is just support for the Black Student Union, again, trying, we do not want to ignore their contributions that he mentioned in his speech, to be allowed to fly this flag during the month of February. This is not a new policy or an old policy. This is just a one-off that we want Dr. Nemo to have the discretion to fly this flag if he so chooses. And I'm just looking for board support on this.
Is it the flag that we see on the screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And is it just until policy?
Until we have a policy that spells out how we will fly flags in the future. Again, this request was made months ago, and we're holding a request hostage for a policy that just wasn't ready. So that's what we're trying to avoid.
Having full support of this.
You're in support?
Do we need a motion?
So move. Well, I think we need a motion to adopt the proclamation first.
Yes.
So I'll make that motion.
She move.
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor to accept the proclamation?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
No, this one, the one that just...
And then we just need a consensus of support, correct? We have the support of the board.
Yep, gotcha.
Yes. But do we need to do a motion to allow the flag to be flown?
It was amended, amended to the proclamation, so I think, I think we're good.
So where do we...
Or does it provide a consensus? If you want to do a motion, you're welcome to. It's not required, as long as it provides a consensus, there's a motion.
Okay, well, the consensus was for the proclamation and not for the flag.
Yeah, it was for the flag.
We did the motion for the proclamation. We can do a consensus vote for the flag.
Why don't we do that, just so that it's there?
Okay.
Sure.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Bradrick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Item 1.2.2, Career and Technical Education Month, Dean Josh West.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I want everyone to know that when I got here this morning, my shirt was pressed, ironed. There were no coffee stains, but we're in the thick of it now with the first week of classes, so, you know, please forgive me.
Understood.
It is my honor to read the proclamation for January as Career and Technical Education Month, whereas February, ooh, oh, excuse me, February. Whereas February 1st through 29th, 2024, has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by Association for Career and Technical Education, and whereas Career and Technical Education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for career readiness, whereas the ever-increasing cooperative efforts of career and technical educators in partnership with business and industry stimulate the growth of our regional economy and nation by preparing graduates for high-wage, in-demand careers, whereas Career and Technical Education at JJC affords individuals with opportunities to learn new skills across more than 50 programs. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees proclaims the month of February 2024 as Career and Technical Education Month in Illinois Community College District 525.
So move with the correction of 2024.
Thank you.
Who seconded?
Nancy.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Item 1.3, Chair's Request for Closed Session for Discussion Under 2C1 Personnel, 2C2 Union Negotiations, 2C11 Legal, and 2C21 Closed Session Minutes Motioned, I'm sorry, Closed Session Minutes.
So move.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Thank you.
Sorry. Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.4, Chair's Looking for a Motion to Return to Public Session.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Bradrick?
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Present.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Present.
Motion carries.
Item 1.5, Public Comments. Karen, do we have any public comments?
None that I'm aware of.
Item 1.6, Moment of Silence, Dr. Nemo.
Chairman Bazinski, thank you. I'm asking the college community to join me in a moment of silence today for the following individuals. Patricia Heilman, a recent retiree of the JJC bookstore. Shelby Peterson, mother of Denise Clark, Administrative Assistant in our I-Campus and mother-in-law of Gary Clark in shipping and receiving. Donna Wonderlick, mother of past chairman Bob Wonderlick. Ernie Muncie, father of Heidi Muncie, a social and behavioral sciences professor. And Louis Savoye, brother-in-law of nursing professor Jennifer Wills Savoye.
Thank you, Dr. Nemo. Item 1.7, Selected Reports, 1.7.1 Enrollment Report, Dean Bob Morris.
Chairman Bazinski, I have the pleasure once again of introducing Bob Morris, who is the Dean of Enrollment. Bob has some very promising data that he would like to share with us today. Dean Morris?
Thank you. Chairman Bazinski, trustees of the board, President Nemoa, and members of the JJC community. Again, I am Bob Morris, and I'm the Dean of Enrollment here at the college. And tonight, I would like to provide a recap of fall enrollment and an early look at how the college is looking for spring enrollment, and then some thoughts that I'd like to share on HLC's visit specific to the Strategic Enrollment Management Committee. So, I appreciate the opportunity to have this forum for the next few minutes. Regarding fall and the demographics, not a lot of changes there. Seventy-five percent of our students are still younger than the age of 25. Now, our age, average age of student did increase slightly. In 2022 fall, it was 23.4, so now it's 24 years old. Our male-to-female ratio stayed pretty much the same, but one area where we did see some movement was in the full-time-to-part-time ratio. Full-time ratio is 38%, part-time 62%, but in fall 2022, it was 65% part-time, 35% full-time. So we're gaining ground in the full-time enrollment area, and I think that's significant when you look at the total number of credit hours that we're seeing and the increases there. So really positive signs there. In terms of our race and ethnicity, we have seen some movement here as well. First of all, our Hispanic enrollment last year was at 31%, and this year, you can see it's up to 33.6%. So, seeing some nice gains there. And our African-American enrollment went from 9% to 10.4%. Our Asian enrollment stayed pretty much flat, and our white enrollment dipped from 53% to 48.8%. So, little bit of a shifting in our student body, nothing surprising there based on what we've been sort of seeing all along over the past academic year. In terms of where our students are coming from, the top four areas remain the same: Joliet, Plainfield, Bolingbrook, and Romeoville. I will say that I did include some data on some Grundy County high schools and their enrollment here at JJC for fall '23, just for reference. I know there's, there's a lot of talk about expansion into Grundy County, so I thought this might provide a little bit of additional perspective there. Looking at fall, there's, there's so much to say and so many stories to tell, so I will try to keep it brief. But to really understand JJC's numbers, I think it's important to have some context in terms of what's happening nationwide and what's happening statewide. So nationwide, community college enrollment is up 4.4%, and statewide, it's up 5.7%. Now, as I've said on multiple times, the Tenth Day Census number is merely a snapshot at a very specific point in time, and it is not a reflection of where the college is. And I can say that factually because on the opening day of classes in fall, the very first day of classes, we were up in enrollment. There were some timing differences in terms of when dual-credit students could be enrolled, and that's why you see some fluctuation there. But as you also see, we rebounded very nicely and ended up with a 6.7% increase. So we are above the national average in terms of total enrollment, and we are above the, or the state average in terms of total enrollment. And another piece of data that I think is really important is, it's not just about the headcount who's here, but we're also making progress in our retention. Our retention fall 2022 to fall 2023 went from 39.4% up to 44.6%. That's a pretty significant jump, and that speaks to all the work that's being done, yes, all across, all across the different areas of the college. And I want to talk later about kind of what I'm seeing from a qualitative standpoint, but we'll, we'll focus still on the numbers for the next few minutes. More successes. Our Hispanic enrollment is up 9.3%. Nationally, Latinx enrollment is up 4.4%. So again, we're well above the national average there. African-American enrollment nationwide is up 2.1%, and again, we are up over 18%. So really, really strong numbers there. There's something else that I wanted to mention that I think is important, and it speaks to how well we might be and should be positioned going forward. This year nationwide, there was a 3.6% decrease in freshman enrollment at all four-year schools, almost a 4% decrease. Students are not wanting to commit to the four years. That's changing, and it's changing pretty quickly. But enrollment at short, in short-term certificate programs over the past year is up almost 10%. That speaks volumes about, again, where we are positioned. We offer so many wonderful short-term certificate programs, and I think that speaks to what today's student wants. They, they want to value their time, their investment, and they want a return on that investment. And I feel that with these national trends, we're in a good position to do that. And the other thing I want to point out is full-time enrollment, again, we talked about that a little bit ago, but 5.3% as an increase in full-time enrollment. Now, I would be remiss if I didn't at least briefly touch on the fact that, as you all know, dual-credit had a tremendous, tremendous semester. But I'm going to let Dr. Nemoa talk about that in a little bit more depth, a little bit later on in tonight's meeting. But I could not not mention it, so I set the table for you, but I'm going to let you do what you need to do there. An early look at spring numbers, again, I think we're off to a really good start. These numbers as our, as our opening day, yesterday morning, up almost 7% in headcount, up over 5% in credit hours. This is something that I think is very significant, and I don't often report on this, but I think it's critical in the world we're living in today in terms of community colleges and the short-term programs. Our non-credit programs are up almost 74% for spring. That's a huge number, and we talk about the relationship between non-credit programs and credit programs. And I can tell you that from fall 2022 to fall 2023, there was a 32% increase in the number of students who transitioned from a JJC non-credit program to a JJC credit-bearing program, and that generated over $200,000 in additional tuition revenue for the college. So the collaboration that's taking place between folks at City Center, the ESL students, the GED students, and the people in admissions, and the people in the other student development areas, and the instructors, it's really paying off, and that's very encouraging to see. Now, you always hear me come up here, and I'm very much a numbers-driven individual, you know that, you've heard me time after time. But there's some things that are changing that I think is very important for the board to know and to understand. HLC was here, as you know, this past fall, and they had an op, we had an opportunity as the Strategic Enrollment Management Committee to meet with HLC separately. And they asked about our approach to writing the SEM plan. They asked about our collaborative, who we, who we collaborated with, how we put it together, how we're assessing it, all of those things. And they came away so very pleased. And the thing that really I have seen change is the campus-wide engagement when it comes to enrollment. Now, this is my sixth, yeah, I've just completed my sixth fall semester here at JJC, and I took over leading the SEM committee six years ago. And I can tell you that it was not uncommon during some of those early meetings, the first year, even into the second year, we would have eight, 10, maybe 12 people attending a SEM committee, and those were okay. The conversation was lively, we accomplished what we need to. But today, it's a different world. The average attendance at today's SEM meetings is between 25 and 30 individuals. I provided an update to the campus community during Welcome Week about enrollment last Friday. Nearly 50 people attended. Early in my tenure here, people were interested in enrollment, right? Everybody wanted to know about enrollment, they wanted to know if enrollment was up, if it was down. Today, though, people are interested in being involved in finding the solutions to meet the enrollment goals. And it's not just admissions and financial aid, as it is of, that is often, you know, associated with enrollment. It's all the way across campus. It's IT, it's marketing, it's all the other student development areas, it's faculty, it's the academic deans, it's senior leadership, it's facilities. If you ever came to a Discover JJC and you, and you saw all of those things kind of come together in one event, you'll kind of see what I'm talking about. It's a different time here at JJC, and it's a time that I'm very excited to still be here reporting on these types of things. And here's where I'm leading with that. You know, it's admittedly, it's much more fun to present to you when all of those arrows are pointing up and they're green, but we have significant challenges ahead of us, very significant challenges. We have a pending enrollment cliff where high school populations are going to shrink. We have an increasing dual-credit population where we have to make sure that we're ready as a campus to welcome them as degree-seeking students. We know that we have some areas we need to fix as we're onboarding the students, as we're making that transition seamless. It's part of the college's strategic plan, it's part of the DEI plan, and it's part of the SEM plan. We're all working together towards the same goals. Again, we have major challenges ahead of us, but I feel confident and I feel comfortable saying that I believe we have the right culture, the right climate, and the right people to meet these challenges head-on. So with that, I will conclude my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. We do say I have some questions from the board. Trustee Morales?
Thank you for your presentation. How are we doing with accelerated classes like math and English? Are we offering accelerated classes?
I don't have that information in front of me, but I will certainly get it for you.
Okay. I know that a lot of students are, like you said earlier, they're value, we need to value their time, and so I know a lot of students don't want to sit in a 15 or 16-week semester, and I thought at one point when Dr. Mitchell was here, we talked about offering more of our accelerated and/or hybrid classes.
We are. We are certainly offering more, but I can't necessarily speak to the success rates in those classes.
Okay.
But we offer classes now in four, six, eight, 12, 14, 16 weeks, so there's a lot of variety. We're increasing our online and hybrid offerings significantly, so we're giving students many more options. So I just don't have the specific data or the success rates to share with you this evening, but I can see what I can find out for you.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
And then my next question. So this year is the first year that FAFSA changed again in, like, over a decade. And this time, they took away the IRS retrieval tool, where you could just click a button and all their tax information would be downloaded, and they went back to manual. I don't know why they did that, because that just leaves a lot of opportunity for fraud. And they're making it a two-day process where you have to log in today to get your FSA ID, and then you have to wait a few days until you get an email that it's been confirmed, and then you can do the FAFSA. So it's like a two-step process. Do you, like, what are we doing to support students to navigate? Because people are finding it to be more challenging now, which is interesting because that then discourages people from filling it out, and maybe it could affect enrollment if people are not even, they get so overwhelmed that they just don't do it.
Right. I appreciate the comments and certainly the question associated with that. I can tell you that we are out in front of it as much as we possibly can be at this I can tell you that we are out in front of it as much as we possibly can be at this point. The whole goal of it, and again, this was a lot of those past years ago, but now's when they're implementing it, is they reduce the number of questions on the FAFSA from well over 100 down to 36. So in theory, it's going to make the process easier for the students to complete the FAFSA and encourage more to do so. There are some glitches, as you mentioned. What they did, starting at the end of December, was they had what they called a soft rollout where they opened it up, but then they shut it down periodically so they could test it, fix glitches, do all those things, and it created some slowdowns. They opened it back up, and now it's up 24/7. So regarding what are we doing at JJC, we are, we are working hand-in-hand with Illution so that we can program our systems. Illution is working hand-in-hand with the Department of Education to make sure they know how to help us program our systems. But in terms of specifically helping the students now, we are actively engaged with the students. They're calling, they're coming in. We have FAFSA completion workshops on the schedule beginning this month. We will be out at the high schools at their events, helping with these students as much as possible. We understand it is a big challenge for the students because anytime there's a change, the change can be difficult. And we're going to help them any way we can navigate through these changes. I think ultimately, it will be a much better system for the students. But this first year with growing pains, all we can do is meet the students where they are, help them every step of the way. And I tell you, and this is not just me bragging, but I have the best financial aid staff I have ever been associated with in my 23 years in higher education. They're very good at what they do, and I think that we'll be able to do a good job in helping the students out. It's tricky. The rules keep changing constantly. It's frequent adjusting, new webinars, oh, you got to attend this one. Now, this is new from the Department of Ed today. It wasn't yesterday. It's not been easy, but we're on top of it, and that's about the best answer I can give you right now.
Thank you. I agree. You do have a fabulous financial aid team.
Thank you. I will let them know that you said that.
Yes, thank you. And then, you know, I don't know if maybe I just didn't get it and the rest of the board did, but could you email me a copy of your presentation?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Trustee Broderick.
I love the fact that you said you're working with the high schools because subbing in the high schools, I see the notices up all over the high school walls. Is there anything you can do with the high schools? Because I know they send out emails or letters to their juniors and seniors about the FAFSA. Anything that you can get that Joliet Junior College will be there to assist? Is there any way of doing that?
Yeah, we are doing that. In some cases, we have been invited. In other cases, we're reaching out to them, offering our services. Other things that are new in some of the bigger high schools is now we're hosting weekly office hours. So a JJC representative is there on their high school campus once a week, every week. And while typically that's an admissions function, it doesn't necessarily have to be. There's no reason that those office hours couldn't be occupied by a financial aid staff member that can go and help in those regards. But please rest assured, we are working very closely with our high schools as we're all navigating these changes.
That's good because I see a lot of postings of FAFSA tonight, learn about FAFSA tonight, all over their hallways. So it is nice to see that.
Absolutely.
And then my question, because you're talking about enrollment. You said enrollment was up. What is our enrollment for the campuses? Do you know for Romeoville, for City Center, for our main campus? Because when we're looking at the Westward Movement, and I saw that you put Morris up there, what type of enrollment are we looking for that we would, you know, need, you know? And I'm looking at the need. Like, we have it in Romeoville. Where's our, are we at full capacity?
I wouldn't say we're full capacity, but I can say our enrollment at all of our locations is up. At main campus, and this is as of, this is as of yesterday morning. And again, these numbers will change as time goes by. But we are up 7.3% on main campus. We have over 3,000 students. At the City Center campus, we're up 63.4%, we have 268 students.
Nice.
At Romeoville, we are up 6.6%, and we have over 350 students. So at the Morris Education Center, we have five students right now. But again, it's very early in the semester. But I get this report every Wednesday, as does all the presidents and cabinet, that lists the enrollment, all of the various buckets that I review, and it does also list the enrollment for the various locations as well.
What is our capacity at Romeoville? Do we know? If you could find out, because I think we all look at, you know, we definitely want to look at the Westward Movement, but we also want to look at what the capacity of the students to make sure that we're meeting the demands of the areas and we're not, you know, moving people from the Joliet over to Morris or Joliet over to Romeoville. I just want to know what our campus, you know, capacities are. At main campus, you said 3,000. How can the main, how many can main campus hold?
I don't know the answer to that. I can see what I can find out, but I really don't know at full capacity what our classroom capabilities are.
And we're also at Lincoln Way East. So do we have any numbers for Lincoln Way East?
I don't have any numbers on this report for Lincoln Way East.
Could you provide those to Dr. Namoah so he could get that to us so that we can see what our capacity for the students? I mean, because I'm sure that that area's got to be up too. Do the numbers of enrollment include dual enrollment too?
In this report, no, because they have not yet begun to enroll dual enrollment students for spring.
Okay, good. I wanted to make sure of that. Okay, but if you could just, because I'm excited to see that the City Center is up so much. That's phenomenal.
Yeah, their culinary program really took off again this past fall, and it's carrying over into the spring. So really good work being done at the City Center.
Is there anything, and I'm going to bring this to Dr. Farmer because I know that falls under her, but I'm going to ask you too. Is there anything we have to do? Because I know years ago, we looked at the classes to see if we needed to change classes, change subjects, to do some renovation to the curriculum, as they called it, to entice more for whatever the new direction for the students was. Have we looked into that as to what the new direction of studies for the students are? Am I throwing you guys? I don't mean to.
Dr. Namoah, if I may invite someone to the podium to respond to that question? Josh West?
In terms, just to clarify, in terms of developing new programs and updating curriculum in terms of coursework and whatnot?
Well, yeah, because when we looked at it a couple of years ago, we saw that there was only so many in this class and so many in that. So was there really a need to hold this class here and that class in Morris? Do we need new classes? And they came up with some new ideas.
I think you mean sections, right? Section of the same class?
No, no, I'm talking about new material, new type of topic. Because when you were looking at some of the things, we need to go into more of the medical, more of the respiratory stuff. We changed. We did a new direction. We looked at what the students' needs were. Are we ever assessing what the students' needs are for new degrees that they're looking for? That's what I'm looking at.
For new academic programs, if I can clarify that.
You're right. You're right. Academic programs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thanks. Absolutely, we are. We are, we're always working with our advisory councils. Every program under current tech education has a working advisory council of industry experts, high school faculty, internal supports, our faculty. And on the course level, we're constantly talking about what we're doing in the classroom and how that matches what the needs are in industry to make sure that they're prepared once they go out in the workforce. But we're also looking at new degrees to meet new demands. For example, I had a conversation with Constellation today about the potential for developing a hydrogen degree. That's, and we're also looking at, and this is obviously going to take board approval, right? But since we're on the topic, we just received a sizable grant from the state to build out our electric vehicle program to take it from a certificate to an Applied Science Associate's degree. And so we got, we got money for, you know, a Tesla and a couple of lifts and whatnot. Again, this will all come in front of you. And we, when we get a new program or when we, when we build a new program, again, we talk to industry partners, and then it gets worked through our curriculum committee internally. Then it gets sent to the state. Then it gets sent through our accreditation, and then we can offer it. So it's a process. We're also looking at service management degree in automotive because there's a big demand there. But basically, what I'm saying is, is we're always looking at it, but we have to substantiate any new program with the state by showing that there are jobs available or there will be jobs available in the not-too-distant future. Otherwise, it will not get approved, and we better have support from our district employees. And we need them to make sure that we're developing the curriculum to meet their needs. But we're always looking.
And that's good. That's what I was looking for. Because remember when Dr. Fletcher, was it Randy Fletcher, that did the whole curriculum assessment to see what we needed, to do improvements? Because was it worth, we want to definitely increase enrollment, but we also don't want to see just five kids sitting in a class or a class that we thought had enough enrollment, but now we have to say no because two students decide to drop out. There's not enough in the class.
Trustee Broderick, absolutely. And we're not doing our students a service if they're sitting there and they're not learning stuff that they're going to see and get jobs for. And so every one of our programs also have program outcomes tied with the learning outcomes needed for those positions. And those are reviewed annually to make sure that students are meeting those outcomes. And again, that those advisory councils are blessing those outcomes as what they're looking for when they get in the field.
Great, because that answered my questions for enrollment. Because we're all, I think that's what all the colleges in Illinois and all over the nation are concerned about is enrollment.
Yeah, if we're not changing to meet our industry's needs, we're not doing our job, so we definitely are.
Thank you so much, Josh.
So you mean Dr. Namoah's not volunteering his Tesla so we can work on it?
We're hoping for Dr. Namoah's support on this one. We like our chances. We like our chances. Yep.
But are you going to make sure the charging stations don't get frozen?
I was reading that this morning as well. That's a challenge.
Thank you, Dean West.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Oh, Dean Morris, if you could return to the podium.
If I may, Dr. Namoah, I know that Amy Gray, our Vice President for Academic Affairs, is virtual, and she would like to add to Dean West's response.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer, and thanks, Dean West. You did a great job of explaining, especially in CTE, how we review programs. And just to add a little context, the Illinois College Community Board requires that every program is reviewed every five years. But, you know, JJC, we take it to the hilt. So we actually review every single program every single year. And it's a very thorough review. We look at pass rates, we look at job placement, we look at how many students are in the program, we look at five-year trends. And every, not only do we do every program, we do every discipline as well, even other areas of the college other than academic affairs. So it really helps us to do program assessment. And probably the most recent example of teaching something out because it really is no longer a viable program at the associate degree level is our interior design program. We were noticing over the last eight years or so that enrollment was declining, and so was job placement. So we took about two years to see if there was anything we could do to get enrollment up, but realized that the trends were going to requiring a bachelor's degree for good job placement. So I believe we have about two students left in that program. We made a commitment to teach every single one out and give them the opportunity to graduate. But not only do we look at, so just to point out, not only do we look at adding programs, but we want to make sure that we're not keeping antiquated programs around.
That's where my, that's where the basis of mine was at. Because do you also, Amy, check into like ZipRecruiter and all those that are looking for people that are unemployed? They have to go and sign up to the iEmployment line and look at job situations? Because there's a lot of different jobs out there that don't require the full four-year degree but do require an associate's degree or a certification.
Right, or a cert, exactly, the certificate. And, you know, we love a stackable credential. If we can start, especially in Dean West's area or in healthcare where we can start with their certificate and have it lead to diploma and then even matriculate into the four-year schools, we are definitely, we look at those and we look at programs for incumbent workers who are working in a field, but maybe having a degree or certificate is going to help them garner a higher salary or a higher-level position. So we are always looking at those.
Thank you.
Trustee Harris.
Thank you for your report. The numbers are very, very impressive. I'm glad to see that. Makes our future look great.
Thank you. Trustee Garcia, again.
No questions. Thank you for the wonderful presentation and all the work that you and your team do every day.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Trustee Mahalik.
No questions. Thanks for the report. I've been on the opposite end of it, and I like to see this report, so thanks, Bob. Appreciate your work.
Thank you. Trustee Ellis.
No questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Morris. Thank you. Item 1.7.2, the Faculty Union Report from Dr. Bob Marsink.
Hi, everybody. This will be very brief. I do want to say I saw Josh earlier in the day, and his shirt looks exactly like it.
Josh, you're in trouble.
I really have very little. We just began the semester. We're all excited to be back. Yesterday was an interesting start to the semester, and, but I thought it really went smoothly with faculty being that we had to immediately adjust to students not being on campus and teaching them virtually. And I was very, this is anecdotal, but I was very happy to see that I had great turnout in my classes. I had maybe two kids who didn't show up, and a lot of people said, oh, they're not going to show up for a virtual meeting if they didn't sign up for an online class, but they did. And I think that says a lot about our students, so. And other than that, we're just looking forward to a great semester. And hopefully, things will warm up a little bit. We'll have our, and we'll do our recruiting at Discover JJC, and we'll be ready to go. So that's all I have. I do want to thank Bob also for his presentation. It's always nice to thank a fellow Pittsburgher for their, for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I know that the grade schools and the high schools have the rule they can only do five virtuals/remotes. Do we in the college have that too? Because they said that the kids then have to extend their days till they graduate. Does that apply to the college?
I'm probably not the person who can answer that question. Amy Gray, Amy Gray can probably answer that if I may.
Yes, I can answer that, and no, that does not apply to us.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. 1.7.3, the Adjunct Faculty Union Report from Ms. Laurel Iskow.
Good evening. I have only short and positive things to say today. Enrollment is up, and it's always awesome for adjuncts. It's great for everybody, but it's even better for adjuncts. Temperature is in double digits. That's a positive. It is in double, well, maybe not still. It was earlier today. It's 18. Awesome. And all my students showed up today, which I was totally impressed. And other than, the adjunct faculty center is open and staffed and really finally ready to roll. It's been kind of a process, but we're here. And so I'm really looking forward to people starting to move in that direction and use those supports and use that space. It looks great, and I'm really pleased with the outcome and just anticipating really positive things. We also had the adjunct dinner last week. Thank you to Dr. Namoah for being there and to Dr. Gray and the HR staff. Actually, there were a large number of very positive presentations from people throughout the college, from the tutoring center and the library and all over. So I appreciate all of those people who showed up to support adjunct faculty and help us navigate, especially the newer adjunct faculty. So with that said, that's pretty much all I have to say. It's nice to see everybody, and I'll see you again in a month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.7.4, the Building and Grounds Committee Report. Mr. Jake Mahalik and Ms. Ayesha Ellis.
Senator Ayesha, I'd like to say temperature is the eye of the beholder. If you're a heating company, you like it really, really cold, so check it back down.
In construction at the moment, we are still waiting on the replacement G-building switchgear.
It hasn't been, hasn't arrived yet, so we're waiting on the material equipment to come in right now, so.
The B-building main power transformer was installed in December. The AHU replacement for the CDB project is on order.
It looks like it's, the equipment is going to be delivered in May. That is the thing that's holding the project up, but it should be delivered in May and should start the process right after that installation, so.
For the replacement tower at the early childhood playground, we're still, we're looking to begin in spring of 2024.
It just got too cold outside, so we can't install the It just got too cold outside, so we can't install this right now. So we're going to do it in the spring then, so.
The IT Service Room crack unit submittals are currently being reviewed. The CNA lab at Romeo Ville, they're currently doing the punch list items on the cabinetry. In design for the Vet Tech Edition, they are looking to start construction in May. For project bids, the T-building boiler with condensing boiler is going before the board tonight and was slightly over budget.
It was slightly over budget, and this is not due to the installation or anything, or labor. It's due to equipment fluctuation. As of January 10th, we got a notice in the HVAC business that all equipment and material prices are going to go up 7%. So this is just an ongoing thing, and the, these rooftop units are huge, and they're not mass-produced like regular ACs and furnaces. So that's going to cause the price to go up and fluctuate on these a little bit more than most other units in the HVAC world, so.
And the replacement for the air handler unit will go before the board in March, and will go out to bid next week.
That's everything for us.
Thank you. Item 1.7.5, Board Policy Committee Report. Ms. Nancy Garcia, again.
Yes, thank you. The Bor, that, the Bor Policy Committee, we're going to be meeting towards the end of this month, and we do have a few things that we're going to be sharing with you all for the first reading.
Jim, can I interject something with Nancy?
Go first.
Okay. I gave you guys a packet of things that I did do some research, because you took it back last month for the board. And this one, I went from, to the Illinois Valley Community College. They have it very simplistic and very easy to read and written out. And then I also did give all of you, because I've been researching with all of the colleges on how they do it, so that you have an idea of how they do their expenses for trustee expenses, so that this doesn't become constantly a topic of conversation. It addresses budget lines or individuals and how much they do do. And I had 21 out of 20, 21 colleges, I think, out of 22 that do allow for every trustee to be able to go to any conference that they want to go to. They have discretionaries where they go into either the president's budget, or they do allow another compensating budget. And I think it's, one of the, two of the CEOs told me, or CFOs told me, that they do go into the Budget Contingency Fund. And I think that's where we have to look, so that the language is something that we determine, like in, in May or June, so that when the budget is set, we know what the trustee's plans are. And that way, then, it's board approval that we don't go through any of this, this is this budget, this is that budget, this is this line item or whatever. It seems that most of the colleges, I should say, the majority of the colleges do do the line item. They don't do the individual account like we do. We're the only one that does the individual. So I think we need to, as I've suggested before, move away from the individual and go to the budget line. And you can see from all the work of what the chairs, the CFOs have shared with me in the report of travel budgets. This is going to be going before the ICCTA group too at our next meeting, because they all want to see where the money situations are at. So I thought I'd provide that to you early, so you could see what I'm working on.
Perfect. We will go ahead and take a look. I know that this was one of the policies. This is specifically the, the meeting expenses and additional ongoing training. So this is something that we will be discussing. I'll take a look and review, and we'll go ahead and present something for you all. Thank you.
Item 1.7.6, the Finance Committee Report. Mr. Jake Mahalik and Mrs. Alicia Morales.
There was no finance committee meeting this month, so that's a brief.
That is a quick one.
Can I ask a question of the finance?
Yes.
Okay, I went through and looked at our budget detail on the educational fund expenses. And I did note in the report that I gave you on all of the schools, on what they do with the money for the travel expenses, they do allow, some of the presidents do allow it to come out of their funds too. There is other expenditures. I don't know what the other expenditures is for $150,000 that we put in the budget for 2024. 2023 only had $10,000. The year before that had $42,000, $4,240. That's in your packet that you can look at. So if there is a possibility, because the other, the other chairs have said their presidents do cover any expenses like we did, Dr. Namou did cover Karen's expenses going to the ACCT. And also, in looking at the report, you'll see that the expenses for even national, what we have for the 3,500 doesn't cover it. It barely covers anything for that. So that has to be looked at and increased. And I think that's something that we have to look at seriously, because we're not allowing, according to our policy, that all board members should have the development and be able to go to the conferences, because you've got the national, you've got the state, and you've got the national legislative one that's coming up. All should be going to it, because most of the colleges do ask all of their trustees to go.
So what was the, what was the question?
My question is to look into what the $150,000 other expenditures is under the executive office, under the educational fund expenses.
Jeff, do you have, is Jeff here, or did he duck out?
The $150,000 was set for strategic initiatives and big ideas for President Namou out of the president's office. That was presented to the board when we detailed the budget last year.
Okay, do we have a, because some of them also do where they have.
So point of order, point of order. This is a topic that is not part of their discussion, or was it the policy committee? This is something you're addressing.
This is finance. I'm asking finance.
No, it's not. No, it's not. You're, you're going back into your budget and your unlimited spending, which we're not going to agree to this meeting tonight.
I didn't talk about that.
Let the policy committee work this policy, and we'll come back after the policy's presented to us and see what we have on the table. Right now, you're bringing up numbers no one's prepared for. No one had any heads up that you were going to start looking at line items and budgets that none of us have had in front of us. So let's put this aside.
I'm bringing this up as a question.
Point of order, we are listening to committee reports.
Right, and the committee said he had nothing, and I'm bringing this to him to ask him to research.
And you brought it to her, you brought it to him. We are going to move on now. This item is dead for right now. We're not going to discuss this anymore. That's not the purpose of these reports, is for you to ask all these wish lists for Maureen.
It wasn't a wish list for Maureen. It was a wish list for all trustees. I think you're taking a very, very personal position on this.
We spent two months now. You wanted unlimited budget. We're not giving you an unlimited budget. As the budget is right now, you're overspent. We're not going to give you more money.
Jim, you're, you're totally wrong on this.
Okay, well, then let's bring it up at a different time, because we are back to committee reports. The finance committee is doing their report. This is not part of a finance committee report.
And many of these meetings are optional. None of them are required. We serve for free. We're volunteers, so they are optional.
Unfortunately, you don't know all of the meetings and what they pertain to if you went to.
All I know is the feedback I'm getting from every meeting you attend is negative. Everything, every time you go to a meeting, I get feedback that it's negative, and then you come before this board and ask for more money.
I didn't ask for more money. I asked.
You wrote it in another letter to Dr. Namou today. Put this aside. We've given it to the policy committee. They will work on the trustee budget and the development. You and I have had this conversation five times now. Let it end. Let the policies and the finance committees work their processes the way they're supposed to. You do not drive those processes. We have them selected for these committees. We trust them. We will wait till we see what we get back from them.
No problem.
Item 1.7.7, the President Report. Don't you dare bring up budget.
Chairman, thank you. Chairman, sir, yes, sir. I just want to take a moment to acknowledge Dean Morris's presentation. Thank you, Bob, for making that presentation. And, you know, Dean West, thank you for, for adding some context, and Dr. Gray as well. You know, to trustee Broderick's question in regards to the programs, the mix of programs that we offer. You know, I'm, I'm quite comforted to know that we've got academic leaders and our faculty who are very focused on the mix of programs that are offered at each location and across all of the different modalities. Our academic apparatus has committed to even exploring, using some predictive analytics to get questions like the ones that trustee Broderick has posed right. So know that as our identity as a junior college has kind of transitioned into more of a comprehensive community college that now offers, or awards, rather, over 2,500 credentials. Half of those are degrees, half of those are certificates. That's really an artifact of our commitment to continuous improvement, to being responsive to the needs of our students and our communities, that we offer credentials in all of these different areas. So kudos to our academic leaders for their commitment to continuous improvement. So I just wanted to kind of say that first. I want to commend the board before I start this presentation for its commitment to support our students, more specifically, your support of the proclamation to honor Black History Month, and also in support of Black Student Union, representatives of, of which you heard from today. So board, thank you for, for your support of that. I have just a few items. Of course, the momentum of 2023 continues. We're not going to rest on all of those successes. We're continuing to push forward in a lot of different ways. I'll share some of that here with you today. And it all started when we brought employees back, faculty and staff, in the event center. Hundreds in attendance, both in person and virtually, to celebrate our return to campus. And thank you, I'm not sure if trustee Harris and trustee Broderick coordinated this, but they seemed to like turn and wave at, stand, turn and wave at the exact same time. So if you did in fact practice that, well done. And thank you for joining us on that day, trustee Ellis as well. So some of the things we've undertaken and really challenged our, our employees to think about is under the framework of design thinking. I referenced in December that Dr. Farmer, Kelly Roder tonelli, and I wrote a chapter in a book, or were planning to. Over the break, we did indeed do just that. And the title again was really how JJC leaders are using design thinking to design and implement major initiatives at JJC in 12 by 12 by 12 is one, and we'll fast forward to that in a little bit. So I'm hoping that our faculty and our staff will embrace some of these tools and strategies under design thinking. We provided some very specific resources to do just that. And let me commit to the board to provide you with those resources as well. Certainly something to celebrate. Won't do that too much, but I do it every opportunity to go from $0.15 months ago to almost $50,000 in just 15 months is certainly something to celebrate, something I'm very proud of. And the Namou scholars will start rolling off the line in fall of '24. Now, this is the part that Bob left for me, and I'm thankful that he did, although he was contractually obligated to do so by presidential directive. But here it is. Here's what it is. So the numbers over on the left-hand side are new students, new dual-credit students in those specific schools. Okay, so we've added, we added 1,052 students to dual-credit. We went from about 4,500 students up to about 5,500 students in just one semester, thanks to 12 by 12 by 12. The part that I think I'm most proud of, and this will come to, as no surprise to the trustees who've heard my more in-depth presentation, as the cabinet has, and I think PLC and perhaps the college community, this was really an equity initiative, okay? And here it is. And I see trustee Morales zooming in, so let me do this. Let me magically zoom in for her and highlight this part of the initiative that I'm most proud of. And as you're sharing the successes of 12 by 12 by 12, the equity initiative is this, from fall '22 to fall '23, Black student participation in dual-credit up 70%, adding hundreds of new students to the dual-credit. Yes, yes, I think so.
That's amazing.
Amazing. And for Hispanic students, up 38% from fall '22 to fall '23. So this 1,000-student growth, half of the growth is coming from our Black and Hispanic students, and that, that is something to celebrate. On Saturday, I was invited to be a panelist at the African-American Business Association joint event with the NAACP of Joliet. Really just an incredible honor for me, as I did share some of the numbers I shared with you. Really powerful moment, so much so that I knew it would be, and I asked Kainoa and Tiana to join me. And there were a handful of young people. And the more we can expose young people to the teachings of Dr. King, the more equitable and just our society will be. Thank you to trustee Broderick, trustee Harris, trustee Ellis for joining me at the event, and my family as well, or I'm not quite sure if my 10-year-old had a choice. I want to take a moment, as we went virtual on Tuesday, as we went virtual on Friday, as we went virtual yesterday. Dr. Marsink acknowledged, you know, the flexibility, agility of our faculty. I commend our faculty for that, certainly. But know that there is a team, that this is far from a presidential magic wand. Jokes aside, you don't want a Hawaiian president making these types of decisions all by himself. So I just want to acknowledge the team, and as communication goes out, many of you received phone call, rave alert, emails, posts on social media. So communication is a big part of this. But we have access to more data now than ever before. But that data is useless in the wrong hands. Fortunately, here at JJC, that data is in the right hands. So when these decisions are made, the work that goes on behind the scenes late at night, on the weekend, on holidays, comes from these individuals. So to Yolanda, to Karen, to Kelly Roder tonelli, to Amy Gray, to Kara, many of these individuals in this room today, Pat Van Dyne, Judy Connolly, Chief Campbell, Deputy Chief Williams, and Nick, thank you for your commitment to keeping us all safe. Chairman, do you mind if we give that team a round of applause?
No, no.
Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Item 1.8, 1.8.1, approval of minutes for the regular meeting held on December 13, 2023.
Take that motion with a exception to 4.51, need some things removed?
Maureen, for clarification, you're looking at 1.81, correct?
4.5.1, which is under the first reading of policy 1.41.00, trustee development budget. The second paragraph.
Your comment?
Do you want me to make a comment?
There's no second.
I'm looking at, the only thing I want removed is because she is the president, because she is the president of the ICCTA. I did not say that. I said should be realigned, because we don't have sufficient funds. I listened to the tape over and over again, and it did not, I did not say, because I'm the president of the ICCTA. So I ask that line be removed.
Question? The minutes that we have right now, they're not a literal translation of everything that is happening.
Correct. They're not verbatim.
Verbatim.
They're not, they're not verbatim. But I do believe you referenced that you were the ICCTA president, and you.
I listened to it three times.
As did I.
And I listened to it, and I never said because I was the ICCTA president that it should be realigned. I said because we didn't have sufficient funds, is what I said. So all I'm asking is that she remove because she is the president of the ICCTA. Because you've got enough in there that says I'm the ICCTA president anyway. But I'm asking that line to be removed, because I did not say that. It's the only thing I'm asking to be removed. to be removed.
Mr. Chairman?
There's no second.
Second. And if we can amend it to just remove that line?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. The only thing I'm asking. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Or is it?
Any further discussion?
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
No.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
No.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
1.8.2, approval of minutes and destruction of the verbatim record of the closed session meetings held on 3/9/2022.
So moved.
3/10/2022, 3/14/2022, 3/17/2022, 3/18/2022, 3/23/2022, 3/28/2022, 4/6/2022, 4/13/2022, 4/27/2022, 5/11/2022, and 6/15/2022.
Second.
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
1.9.
Hold on. Mr. Chairman, you need a motion then to approve the finding that the need for confidentiality exists for all remaining closed session minutes. That was left out of the prior motion.
Okay. And to find that the need for confidentiality exists for all remaining closed session minutes? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
1.9, approval of agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I had asked for an item to put on the agenda, and apparently it got turned down. So I'm going to ask, what do we have to do? Because I brought it up several times, the discussion of the traveling, the trustees' traveling budget.
It goes back to us.
It went back to the policy committee. The existing budget has a policy for it. The new budget is what the policy committee will work on.
Okay.
We have an existing policy that governs the budget we have for trustee travel right now.
Okay.
We need some time to work on it and review the information and the resources that were given to us to make the best decision and make sure that we are doing our best to make sure that we're providing everyone the resources that they need to in order to do what they need to do here, here on the board. But we will need a little bit of time and your patience. Thank you.
Will it come back by February's meeting?
Let me go ahead and double check. I cannot promise anything at this second. I can go ahead and provide additional updates as I have them.
Okay, because I did ask the chair to put it on the agenda, who at that point in time, when I talked to him, said yes. And then when I asked, when I did saw the draft, I didn't see it on here, so I did question it.
I understand. We'll provide additional updates as soon, as soon as we have them. Thank you.
Because there's more related to it than just policy, though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
We'll need a vote.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
No.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.10, approval of consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Question to legal counsel. On 3.2.4, do we consider this being needing to be pulled, or will it reflect the correct date on there of November 20th, '21?
You talking about the supplement to the agenda? Yeah, it's fine with supplement.
So as long as a supplement, we're fine, right?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a change to the agenda. It's just a change in the information that's for the agenda.
Great. That's all I wanted to make sure of. Thank you.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bazinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 5, reports. 5.1, student trustee report. Trustee Ayesha Ellis.
Hello and good evening. It's great to be back, jumping straight into my report. This past Saturday, I attended the African American Business Association MLK brunch in celebration with the theme, "The Reality of What's Next." I decided to include this in my report because not only was Dr. Namuwa one of the participants in the panel discussion, but when asked how he navigates as a leader with everything going on in the world today, he responded with, "I am not afraid." This stood out to me, and as a student, it was refreshing to hear. I appreciate Dr. Namuwa's fearless and courageous leadership. This week, we are celebrating Welcome Week, and to welcome students back today, members of our JJC community gathered at the Bridge for an event featuring a four-person improv comedy team, used stuff at pillows and free food. Tomorrow from 11:00 to 1:00, we'll be gathering again at the Bridge for more fun, including dueling pianos, a 360 photo booth, and free food. The past few weeks, our athletics teams have been training and working diligently, even bringing back some wins. And here are some of the upcoming games. Our men's wrestling team will be participating at the Harper College Open, January 20. Our women's basketball team will be playing Elgin Community College, January 20. Our men's basketball team will also be playing Harper College, January 20. And our women's wrestling team will be participating at the Warrior Open, January 27. On Tuesday, January 23, I will be joining other student trustees in attending a student advisory committee meeting at Wilbur Wright College. This meeting will be focused on developing and approving our advocacy day plan. Also, on Tuesday, January 23, the Joliet Historical Museum will be hosting a presentation about Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and his connection with Joliet. This event will be from 12:00 to 1:30 in U auditorium. As the student trustee, I envision supporting JJC in creating an environment where all employees who service academic advisors are knowledgeable, responsive, and positive, to ensure all students have the right tools to make informed academic decisions about their college careers. This effort aligns with the JJC strategic plan, which supports the goal of creating an intentional student lifecycle. So my student trustee academic advising project will be beginning this month in a student-led and involves a voluntary survey, focus groups, and meeting greets. This entire project is designed to provide a safe and confidential environment for students to share their experiences regarding academic advising at our college. The focus groups will be on main campus and the meeting greets at the extended campuses. Lastly, we have Main Street, our college, our club recruitment and informational fair. This semester, it is '90s theme, and Main Street will be taking place on our main campus C through F concourse Wednesday, January 31, and Thursday, February 1, from 1:00 to 10:00, and at our extended campuses at City Center Tuesday, February 6, from 1:00 to 2:30, and our Romeo Ville Campus Thursday, February 8, from 10:30 to 12:30. Thank you for your time, and are there any questions regarding my report?
Ayesha, can, I know that it was mentioned last month that we could get some website to go to for what the activities are coming up, because we just got the January one now. I didn't see that we got that. Could, do you know where we can get that?
So there are various ways to figure out what's going on on our campus. You do have a JJC email, so you have access to our calendar online, as well as following us on social media. You have our TikTok information. You know that we post videos every week.
But is there a calendar? Because I thought she had mentioned that there was a calendar that we could.
We do have one that's provided online. So if you want to go ahead and look that way, you do have that option.
So is it online on the JJC online website?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your report, trustee Ellis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 5.2, representative to the JJC Foundation, Ms. Kristi Mulby.
Good evening. I just have a few things. February 1, we're going to kick off our annual sock campaign. This year's sock is pretty creative. It's wolf paws and a picture of the wolf. And today, they did some photo sessions with some of our athletic teams. So we're excited about that campaign. And we're asking any of the trustees, if they're interested in buying socks, to do so before February 15, because that's our, our sock day, where everybody kind of wears them to work and posts them on social media. We're having a alumni night before one of our Wolves basketball games, February 13. It's going to be up in that room that overlooks the event center. And we had one of those last academic year, and it was really popular. So any JJC alums are invited to come and attend that, and you should get more information on that. All the spring scholarships have been awarded and graded, and 90% of them are on the student's account before the first drop date, which is always our goal. And then we just turned around from that, and February 15, the fall scholarships will be posted for them to sign up from February 15 to May. So we give them plenty of time to get signed up for fall of 2024. I just want to share that this year, we had a great year-end appeal, and we raised a little over a half a million dollars for our year-end appeal. And that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 5.3, representative to the ICCTA, ACCT, trustee Harris.
Well, I do believe we're in the process of waiting to receive the awards for the recipients. So if you have had the opportunity to select someone or fill it out for your specific candidate, the ICC and the ACCT will be looking forward to receiving them. And I really don't have anything else to report.
Can I interject?
In the trustee updates.
This is related to the ICCTA stuff?
In the trustee updates.
Item 5.4, trustee updates. Trustee Morales.
I don't have any updates at this point. Just a little note. So when we were going over enrollment, Dr. Namuwa, don't forget that Joliet Township gave JJC a $25,000 check. So if you have students coming in, that would help our enrollment, where we will pay for their first four credits. So that definitely, just don't forget about our students. Thank you.
Trustee Broderick.
On February 5, 4 through 6 is the National Legislative Summit in Washington. All trustees are invited to come. 2, 5 is the ICCTA Board Meeting in DC. 3, 8 and 3, 9 is the Kenke Key Meeting. And if you remember your book on The Great Upheaval by Arthur Levine, he will be there at our luncheon, and he will be doing a presentation. Well worth it. And the first round deadline is 2:23 for the first round of recipients for the awards, and then 3:29. And then the other thing that I'm going to ask is that we seriously look at the policy that refers to board members can ask to have some of their funds moved over to other board members to allocate for them to do things. And because last year, Alicia Morales had 44.27, when we all had 27.27. So I'm trying to figure out, we didn't have any board action for it, but apparently board money was moved for her. We left 11,000 on the table. This year, we have 24,000 out there. So we should be able to get, since the big thing coming up is the one in DC, and all the colleges are asking their trustees to come, and they should be there. It's not just restricted to one trustee going. It's for whatever trustees want to go. And I think we have to look at getting rid of this topic so that it doesn't keep us dysfunctional, that we become a functional board. So that's why I'm asking that we look at moving those funds and correcting the funds from the ACCT issue, because the ACCT delegate is always the ICC delegate, and the alternate is always the ICCTA delegates, alternate should be the same one. So I don't know where either trustee Morales or trustee Bazinski came in, but it should have been trustee Harris. That's how it is, because they're the ones that go to all the meetings. It's not, and if you look at how last year, I gave you this, too, we had trustee organization. We didn't have ICCTA ACCT. I conclude.
We did. It was just, in order to clarify it, last year, it said national organization, and I believe it said, it's the same category, it just has a different name. Last year, trustee organization was ICCTA. If you look at that, what you handed out, everything in there is ICCTA. And trustee national organization is what we now call ACCT. We added those ICCTA and ACCT for clarification purposes, so that it was really clear. But it's the same categories.
And for clarification, I have not been able to travel for personal reasons, so I haven't been able to use my budget, just so you know.
So I'll ask this. Will you allow yours to be transferred?
I will think about that.
And the same as Jake.
It goes back as a policy, as a reminder. So let's not make decisions.
Well, the policy that's currently in effect says that we can ask for it to be transferred. And that's why I'm asking Nancy and Jake and Alicia, because you are the three, because Diane can't go because of the way the funds have been allocated, and I'll call it inappropriately, because Jim should have been against Jim's account, Alicia should have been against her accounts. Because in the experience of my nine years, it's always been whoever's the delegate and the alternate that gets it, not anybody that's a vice or a chair that just happens to be a title that some of us held. But it wasn't because of that. So I remain.
Trustee Harris.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I don't think I've seen anybody since last year, so I want to say Happy New Year. And again, I just want to mention, being the vice chairman for our awards committee with the ICCTA and ACCT, we do want to make sure that Joliet Junior College has one or more of the award recipients or nominees, and hopefully recipients as well. And would you be so kind to loan me some money to go from your budget, Alicia? Or trustee Morales?
I will definitely have to check with policy and see what policy says.
For sure.
And if it's allowable, then we will be considered. Thank you.
For sure. Thank you.
And thank you for asking very nicely and respectfully.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I did that because I am interested in going, but I did find out that my budget was depleted, so. And I think that's about it. I also want to make sure I get in on the socks. But thank you very much for the time.
Trustee Garcia-Guian.
Yes. I'll go ahead and keep it brief. Just want to wish our students the best of luck as they start the semester. And yeah, welcome. Welcome to the semester. Thank you.
Trustee Mahalik.
Glad to see everything back up and swinging again. So I will take two pairs of those socks, too. So thank you very much.
Trustee Ellis.
I have no updates.
Nothing to talk about at all?
No.
And how much of the socks did you say?
20 pounds.
Can I get just one?
One, two. If I can have a pair, too, Kristi, please. Thank you.
As well.
That adjourns today's meeting.
Thank you.
Motion second. So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We're adjourned. We're adjourned. Thank you.